Positive attitude may make him an invaluable asset to our school community. We are grateful for all he does and are proud to recognize him tonight. Thank you very much, Mr. Schmidt. Sorry you cannot be here, but we will recognize him again next week at the staff meeting and have a little present for him as well. Thank you very much.
Are we doing Dolls or are we doing everything?
Thank you, Principal Polisi. I'd like to now introduce Principal Melanie Wagner to talk about her students.
Good evening. As you know, this is one of my favorite, favorite things to do every month. I'm going to announce our kindergarten student of the month first. Our kindergarten student of the month is Alejandra Mixcatitla. Alejandra, come on up. Alejandra's teacher is Mrs. Lick. And Mrs. Lick wrote a few words about Alejandra. She is always a kind kindergarten classmate. Alejandra has shown so much growth this year, both academically and socially. She works hard and she goes out of her way to make sure everyone in our class feels included. Miss Lick is so proud of the hard work that you put forth this year. And she says, "Keep up the great work, Alejandra. Good job." Okay. I'd like to call up our first grade student of the month along with the teacher, Mrs. Ford. Rowan Ramirez, come on up. There you go.
Mrs. Fussner couldn't make it tonight, so I'm presenting for both of us. Rowan is a kind and hardworking student. She comes to school each day with a smile on her face, just like right now, and ready to learn. Rowan always makes an effort to help her classmates when they're struggling or unsure what to do. She also asks for help if she's not sure what to do. She doesn't just do whatever. She makes sure she understands the directions, too. Her positive attitude and eagerness to learn makes her a great role model to her peers. We're so proud of you, Rowan.
Okay. And please to announce our second grade student of the month. Camilla, come on up. Camilla Casaresche. Camilla's teacher is here. Mrs. Stacy McGloin is going to say a few words about Camilla.
Mr. Taylor is not here, so I'm speaking for Mr. Taylor and myself. Camilla, congratulations, Camilla, for being chosen our student of the month for April. Camilla always comes to class with a big smile and has such a positive attitude about school. She is bright, helpful, and always does her best. She is always understanding and kind to others, along with being a great role model for her peers. Camilla, you are not only very respectful, but you are very eager to please your teachers. She never lets a challenge hold her back and comes ready to learn every day. Keep up the great work. We are so proud of you and we are so lucky to have you in our class.
Our third grade student of the month is Nassim Banaz. Come on, Nassim. Congratulations. Nassim, come on right over here. I know Mom's going to want to take a picture and a video. Mrs. Rakowski is sorry she couldn't be here today. She was actually out today. She wasn't at school. But she did send me a message and she wanted everybody to know that Nassim is always very driven to do his best. Nassim's an academic leader who lives for a challenge. He displays great school spirit as well as pride in his heritage. He's always friendly and always willing to help the others in his class. He's reliable. He is a reliable safety. He really is. He's a great safety in the morning. And he greets all students with a big smile. Mrs. Rakowski is very proud of him. And she said, "Nassim, we appreciate you. Congratulations to you and your family." Our Dawes Avenue Staffal team members of the month just happen to be a really dynamic team of teachers. I believe I announced them as the dream team at our staff meeting because that is indeed what they are. Mrs. Stacy McGloin and Mr. Tom Taylor. You're welcome. Teach second grade together in an inclusion second grade classroom. Around Dawes Avenue, they are known for their patience, their inclusivity, their caring, and their collaboration. Tom and Stacy go the extra mile for their students every day, and they make a lasting impression on their students and our entire Dawes family. And they thank you and love you.
You'll also notice on tonight's agenda, two educators were honoring for their service in retirement. I didn't know Mary Graff-Pinnix. I didn't know about her 33 years of service. I didn't know about her commitment, her dedication, her caring for children, for parents, and for this community. But I do know she deserves one heck of a round of applause. Being an educator is the most important job on the planet. We take what society gives us and mold it to become the future. That epitomizes what I have heard about Margie Smock. Margie, I think you're in the audience. Would you please come forward? Your 32 years of service to this school district is so much appreciated. I understand you were a fifth grade math teacher. Did you ever find X yet?
I did not.
And I hope that you keep looking in your retirement, but also reflect back on all the good that you've done for so many families and children. Congratulations.
I just wanted to add, if I could, just a little addition. There has to be hundreds of kids, or maybe already thousands of kids that you've had. I just want to thank you for your amazing career of service and wish you much luck and joy in your retirement. And out of those hundreds and hundreds, or maybe thousands of students whose minds that you've molded and hearts that you've molded, I want to just give you an extra thank you and just share my appreciation because three of those were mine. So I really appreciate it. Good luck.
Bingo. Bingo. Talent show, color run, spring concerts, Teacher Appreciation Week, NJSLA testing, field trips. It's an action-packed time of year in our schools. So many special events because of so many special people that go out of their way to provide these. PTO, support staff, teachers, administrators, and parents. All these wonderful experiences for our kids in a great school district community. You'll notice a few things on our agenda tonight. We've got a calendar for 2425. Believe me, it's already had about seven different iterations, going back and forth with different elements of our staff. While I'm asking the board to approve it tonight, there have been some discussions that warrant attention about the placement of our conference nights. I'll keep you posted with any recommendations for this, which may or may not result in a change. I do think it's important we get the calendar out there and published so people know core dates, like when will school start, when will it end, when are the big holidays, et cetera. You'll also notice on our agenda a board policy in its first reading on civility. This policy sends a clear message that the Board of Education, administrators, and staff will treat legal guardians, parents, and other members of the public with respect and expect the same consideration in return. We live in a world where our role models and the media doesn't necessarily serve us well in that department. We need to make sure we don't fall into that trap ourselves and that the people in our community likewise can be reminded when they are falling into that trap. That kind of a community is one that's best for all of our children. This policy further lays out a process by which violators will be addressed. Let's all work together to set the right example for our kids. As you're aware, and the public are aware, we're recouping 45% of our original funding cut of $1.35 million. In addition to that cut of $1.35 million, we also had $440,000 in cost increases. So that while 45%, or roughly $500,000, seems like a lot, it's not enough to recoup all the losses from those cuts. We are developing plans to use this money to stabilize our budget, to avoid future cuts, and to bring back some of our MTSS programs. That multi-tiered system of support for students intervening for all students will have a positive impact for all students and staff. The interventions our students need are far-reaching, and as you'll see in tonight's School Performance Report presentation, we need them. Related to this, I'm also asking the board tonight to approve our Extended School Year program, our Algebra Readiness and Targeted Academic Support Summer School Programs. I'd like to now introduce Dr. Laura Vanello, who will review the 2223 performance reports. Thank you.
Hello. The performance report is a series of metrics that review our students' growth, their proficiency, and indicators of college and career readiness, such as chronic absenteeism in early grades. What you'll see... So we'll review Dawes. So Dawes' ELA overall performance for the 2223 year was 14.8%. The annual target we didn't meet is what the state sets as our progress towards everyone being at 80% proficient by the year 2032. So we did not meet the annual target that says we are on track to be 80%. For our number of students that are either meeting or exceeding expectations, which is scoring a three or four on the NJSLA in third grade, we're at 13.6% and the state average is 42%. So we have work to do there. In math, the percent of overall performance was 36.1% and the annual target was 45.2%, which seems like we're not there, but within a confidence interval, we do meet that target. The number of students at Dawes earning a three or four in math for the 2223 NJSLA was 33.3% compared to the state average of 46%. So I'll continue. It's okay. The other indicator that they look at for Dawes Avenue, so this is not just third grade, this is the entirety of students from kindergarten through third, is the attendance. So our score for last year was 16%, which meets the target and is under the state average of 18.2%. Both Dawes and Jordan did implement Attendance Academy for the 2223 school year, so that did have a positive impact on our attendance. Jordan has both median growth percentiles for ELA and math because of the range of students there, fourth through eighth, all take the NJSLA. So that is a percentage of the percent of students that are compared to the typical peers across the state. For the 2223 school year, the median student growth percentile was 42.5%, and they did meet the state average. So that state average was a median percentile anywhere between 40 and 59.5. In math, they had a median percentile of 61%. So again, they actually exceeded the state range. For overall ELA proficiency, we were at 28.6% and the state average being 49%. When you look at the difference between overall proficiency and the growth percentile or the median student growth, it's a different comparison. So when you're looking at those two, saying, "Well, how can we have met it in one indicator but not in the other?" It's a way of ranking them differently. Then in math, the proficiency was 17.5% and the state average was 38.2%. I did a breakdown of grade levels and the number of students meeting or exceeding expectations. So as you can see, for the 2223 school year, the number of students in fourth grade through eighth grade earning either a three or a four is listed below. Science breakdown, oh, sorry. Math is there as well. When you see an indicator that's less than 20, that means the number of students in that was less than 20. It's a subsection that they do that to protect student anonymity. So student overall performance on science in grade five, we were at 6% this year. They don't give a state average, but what's that an indicator of is that students are, again, at levels three and before. Same thing for eighth grade. 6% of our students in eighth grade are scoring three or four. And then chronic absenteeism at Jordan is at 18.7% and the state average is 14.2%. So again, we did implement Attendance Academy. We've implemented the intervention model at both buildings, and we still have obviously work to do, even though with our cuts this year, we'll be revamping that to make sure that attendance, growth, and proficiency are, again, high priorities for us here in the district.
Thank you.
We look at scores like that and we go, "Oh, boy." Well, yeah, we've got our challenges, but that doesn't mean we can't make progress on them. That doesn't mean we can't support our children the best we can. And that doesn't mean we can't come together and focus as a community to make the biggest difference where that difference needs to be made. We all know that when young children are read to at an early age on a regular basis and grow up in literacy-rich homes, literacy-rich, not necessarily wealthy-rich, but a literacy-rich environment, that they tend to score better on state standardized tests and assessments. One of the things we could all do, parents, staff alike, when we interact with children, is is play that vocabulary game. It helps. With that said, we'll be laying out some real specific plans over the course of the summer with our staff, and the district will be embarking on an initiative to provide more meaningful parent education to help parents help their children. Thank you for listening to this presentation. That's all I have.
Okay, this time I would like to open up to the public. Any member of the public would like to address the board? Please come up and make a comment. Please remember that we cannot discuss litigations, student personnel items. And this public comment is for agenda items only.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Agenda items only.
Please put in your name, address.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Mary Pat Perron. I'm a retired teacher from Summers Point.
Hi, Ms. Perron. Good to see you again.
How are you? And thank you for the opportunity to speak. I was looking over the agenda last night, and I didn't see the stabilization aid on the agenda, but I was checking it online today, and I did see the stabilization aid. But I don't see the stabilization aid on this agenda, so hopefully I am commenting on an agenda item. Right?
No.
No? We don't have it on the, we don't, we don't have the stabilization aid on the, as an agenda item?
It's on your online, it's on the online agenda. It's under Finance. It's letter Z.
You want to refresh your pages, please?
Finance C is Secretary Report, Cash Report. Oh, Z, I'm sorry. Stabilization aid is on the agenda. And there's a Notice of Stabilized School Budget Aid. It's informational. That came to the district.
So may, I'm sorry, may I comment on it, or?
Yes, you may comment. Absolutely.
Thank you. This, I just want to be clear in my own head that this is a grant, correct? This is a one-time, this is a one-time shot of money that most likely will probably not be there next year. I did notice that the amount, $511,000, is almost the exact amount that you're raising our tax levy by. You're raising the tax levy by 500,000, so, you know, I just have to ask, does that mean we're not going to have a tax increase? And, and I know they answer to that, so it's okay. You don't have to answer. But I know that you're making a motion to accept the money. I was wondering when you were going to have the plan for the money that the superintendent mentioned for the board to approve. Will that be at the next meeting?
So typically, we have all of our public comment, and then when we're done, if we can answer anything, when you're done your statement, we'll go ahead and answer.
Okay, so you'll answer me at a later time?
When you're done, your whole public comment.
That's my whole public comment, right there.
That's it? Okay.
Okay. So you'll answer my question at a later time?
So, if I may respectfully, the purpose of the public comment is public comment, not necessarily public conversation.
I understand.
And if there are questions that are raised that either the superintendent, I'm authorized to provide additional information after public makes comment.
Okay.
I'm usually very willing to do that.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So if your comments are completed.
They are completed.
I would just comment that there's no board action tonight on the stabilization aid.
Okay.
Board action, we just received guidance that board action must be completed by the middle of July. We're hoping to be able to expedite with the County Office of Education to be able to make that for our June meeting.
Okay, our June, your June meeting?
Yes.
We're hoping. We have to wait for the county.
But the timeline that is provided by the state has deadlines for, let me see here, I just happen to have it with me.
And while you're doing that, Mr. Kubeck, I just want to say that under Z, it is to, we are, the motion is to accept the stabilization aid budget. So there is actually a motion on the agenda for that.
Okay. Oh, for tonight?
Yes.
I stand corrected. Thank you very much. So the last day for Executive County Superintendent to approve the budget statement to be advertised is no later than Friday, July 12th. If we can, if we can increase that to get it to June.
Okay.
We would do that.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
That is our hope, to try to do that, but we have to wait and see.
I appreciate it.
Any other members of the public like to address the board? Okay, hearing none. Public comment is closed. We've received no correspondence this month. In terms of City Council Liaison Report, I give a report that we are still working with the city to try to come to a resolution regarding the use of New York Avenue building, and no, no new information has been obtained, obtained at this time. Moving on to Student and Community Affairs Report. Dr. Dolan.
Okay, we met on May 13th, and there are many, many activities and field trips, all kinds of events occurring at both schools between now and when school is over. Very, very many. And that is all available to parents, so I would not list them all, that's for certain. We did talk about a playground installation at DALLS Avenue on the 16th or 17th of May. Hopefully, it's done by Field Day on the 23rd, if all goes well and weather is cooperative. We talked about the Stokes Strip, HIBs. We did talk about New York Avenue. The FASHA has been repaired, so we're happy about that. We are still working with the City Council as well as the County Library on rental of New York Avenue, as well as JFS has expressed some interest. We did talk about our funding, hoping that it would come through. We talked about the summer program, which will be very academic. Staffing is difficult for the summer program. We also talked about ESIP, which stands for Energy Saving Improvement Plan, which we will be working on, but it is a free audit to start with. And that was it.
I'll still let you keep the mic and be up to bat for the Foundation for Education Liaison Report.
Okay. The Foundation met on April 29th. The next meeting is May 20th at 6:30 here at Jordan Road and the Library. They discussed their recent fundraiser at Summers Point Brewery, and they raised maybe $3,000, which was very good, and they helped support the Day of Playland. And they are always looking for people to volunteer and help. So that was it with that.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Dolan regarding either Student and Community Affairs or the Foundation for Education Liaison Report?
I have one more thing to add. One fundraiser is coming up for the SPEF, the last day of school, there's a fundraiser at Custard Hut.
Okay. Thank you very much. Hearing done. I have a motion to approve item 6E, please.
Motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Conover.
Yes.
Dr. Dalton.
Yes.
Mrs. Thomasello.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Mrs. Clemmick.
Mrs. Endicott.
Yes, thank you. Motion approved. Moving on to Finance and Operations. Finance Committee Report. Mrs. Thomasello.
Hi. Okay, so we met on May 7th, and we had a few topics to discuss. One is Mr. Kubeck is, continues to seek someone interested in New York Avenue School. We discussed approval of the contract with Brett DeNovey for the summer programs. We also discussed to submit documents for the recalculation of our previous aid package, which was denied. They said our taxes were correct. An improvement of tax payment schedule from the city of Summers Point, and adopt and a, an existing, and update a uniform minimum of charted accounts, and approve the bid for professional services. And we also discussed the agreement with the YMCA for the, for the upcoming school year and the semi-corrective action plan, which we are at 29%. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Mrs. Thomasello. Okay, hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve item B through Z, please? Thank you, and I'll take that as your second. Any questions? I have a question. So I know that this, I know that the stabilization aid was added, you know, to the agenda. But I guess my question is, it also needs to be approved when we submit our packet. So tonight, we're just, and you know, we're trying to get that submitted so that we can hold our, hold our meeting in June. But so I guess what we're approving tonight is just that it occurs, more of a point of information. I mean, I know it's a motion, but, but...
It looks like you're approving to accept it, saying that you're renewing one of the money, and then you'll have to add it to your budget appropriately and open there and get it.
Okay. Would you mind, just giving a, just for the benefit of our public, this, these numbers just came in. Would you mind just giving, just a brief, two-sentence explanation of the stabilization aid and when, when we received this news and what that, what that means for districts like ours, and why us?
So we, we received this news of the stabilization aid just a couple of days ago. I did put an announcement out to the community and to staff. We knew the bills were brewing for quite some time. If you go on our school website, you can see under Funding Update, a historical log of our efforts. I appreciate the efforts of everybody in the community in trying to make sure Summers Point's voice was heard. According to the New Jersey Department of Education Division of Finance, Summers Point School District is under adequacy by $223,905. That means, that's the state saying that the taxpayer in Summers Point should be paying $223,905 more, an additional 2-point-some percent above what our anticipated budget is. One of the reasons taxes went up, or our plan to go up, is because the Board of Education, in order to qualify for the aid as the bill was originally written, had to take any and all available taxes it could. During COVID, the school district did not raise taxes at all, and while that was a very nice gesture for the community, we all know, none of us have lived in a world where 2%, let alone 0%, is realistic when you're going to continue to have rising fixed costs, whether it be salaries, health benefits, electricity, power, maintenance, soap, paper towels, what have you. So the district had what was called bank cap left over from when it did not raise those taxes, and in order to qualify according to the law, the way it was originally, or the bill, the way it was originally written, was the Board of Education would have to take that bank cap and in fact raise those taxes. I will say, as a taxpayer myself, you know, that's never a popular thing to do, but your school district is at a point where it's been identified as being underfunded, and the state has obviously made its decision as to the extent it will fund its schools and laid that burden back on the local taxpayer. Your board has spent a lot of time deliberating over putting together the budget that was presented last month, and I know additional deliberations will happen relative to the use of our stabilization aid. One of the things that we probably will have an obligation to do would be to replace some of the maintenance reserve that we used to close a budget hole. I could go on until the cows come home, and I hope some of this made sense to you, but there's been no lack of attention to, and/or sensitivity to the condition of the taxpayer and to trying to do things as efficiently and as smoothly as possible. Throw on top of this the notion of a declining enrollment with predicted state aid and then unpredicted state aid reports, and sometimes the reduction in staff does not match the reduction in student population, nor does retirement through attrition provide relief that would otherwise be possible, which results in the situation we're in this year, where we've had to non-renew 13 staff members. It's been a very difficult time.
And so the good news, just to piggyback onto you out of, out of all this, and thank you, you gave a much more detailed, I didn't want to put you on the spot, I just figured it was something to do, but the good news is that one of the bills that we have been advocating for was approved, and we were identified as a district to receive this money. So it just happened the other day. We have to put together, take a look at things again, re-put, put things back together and, and, you know, put that package in for approval. But for tonight, this is just information for our community that we will be receiving that money. So we'll approve that we're accepting it. Any other questions? Remember, we have a motion on the floor right now. So the current motion is to approve 7B through Z. So any other questions? Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Wagner.
Dr. Dalton.
Yes.
Mrs. Clemmick.
Yes.
Mr. Conover.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Thomasello.
Yes.
Mrs. Endicott.
Sorry, be with me for one moment. Trying to pull up. Okay, so much of our discussion was on the School Performance Report that was presented... Okay, so much of our discussion was on the, the school performance report that was presented already by Dr. Vanello, and we discussed the school calendar, as well as the PD that will happen in districts on various days, as well as plans for next year. And the rest of our conversations revolved around the summer instructional programs, the various summer instructional programs that you will see on the agenda tonight. One last thing to add. We did briefly discuss partnering with Jewish Family Services. It's been an ongoing discussion. It's taken place more in Student and Community Affairs, but there was some brief information regarding the possibility of partnering with them. Those were the topics that were discussed in Instruction Committee. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve items B through L, please?
Motion done.
Thank you.
Second, Tommasello.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, hearing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Motion approved. Okay, moving on to Personnel. Our Negotiations Committee Chair is not here. There is no news to report at this time. Can I have a motion to approve items 9B through O, please? Thank you. Thank you. Any questions?
One comment, if I may.
Mm-hmm, yes.
I'd like to congratulate, I see in the audience.
That's good. Don't they do that after the motion? That's okay.
Oh, we didn't do the motion yet?
We didn't vote yet.
Well, we're about to vote. All right. I'm having a night.
It's okay. He did before, after, but it's fine. Okay, any, any questions? Items 9B through O, please? Okay, hearing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. Motion approved. Welcome back home, Mr. Barartis. You're welcome.
Mr. Barartis was one of 24 original candidates. We whittled down to a pool of 13, where we started making some calls, got down to nine through a series of three different interviews of the administrative staff, as well as representatives from the teaching staff. Put, put, put him through the ropes, and he's the best person for the principalship of the Jordan Road School. Thank you, Mr. Barartis.
Is there anything you wanted to say? Did you want to go up and say anything? I don't want to put you on the spot. You don't need to, but I wanted to offer you the opportunity if you so desired. Congratulations. Okay, moving on. Can I have a, to him, can I have a motion to approve item 10A, please?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second, Tommasello.
Thank you. Any questions? May I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. Motion approved. Okay, moving on to Policy. Dr. Dalton, Policy Committee Report.
Okay, all right, we have a software called Strauss Esmay that triggers when we should revise our policies, and we have two for a first reading for this board meeting, and we had a whole bunch of them for our second reading that were on last month. So a fair amount of reading there.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve item 11B. The two policies were entering into first reading.
Motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions? May I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Motion approved. I have a motion to approve 11C. The many policies that have gone through first reading and now we're approving for second reading tonight.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Questions? May I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. Motion approved. Can I have a motion to approve the submission of a letter of support for Jewish Family Services to the Cigna Group Foundation, please? Questions? May I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. Motion approved. Okay, this time I'd like to open it up to the public again. Any member of the public wishes to speak? Please feel free to come on up to the microphone. Please state your name and address.
Renee Campbell. I live at 126 West Groveland Avenue, Summers Point. What I would like to say is not on the agenda. I have two students here, fourth and sixth grade, and one thing that is not on the agenda is special education. Now, I understand funding is difficult, even federally. They don't even give what they say that they're going to give, but if we don't give our special students that chance and take that funding away, I mean, where seriously are we? My, I mean, my, my son used to have an IEP, but his case was closed. So now he was doing tutoring after school. Now the funding for that is now gone. I'm just wondering, you know, like, where do these students go from here? He's sixth grade. He reads at a third grade level, and his fourth, and his math is at fourth grade, and that is a huge concern, not only as a parent, but as a community. I think everybody here should be concerned because after COVID, there's way more of Nathan's out there, and I think we should start talking about that.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone like to address the board? Okay, hearing none. Public comment is closed. Board forum. Any members like to speak?
This is just my observation, but I'm looking at all the artwork that the students have done here, and there is a tremendous amount of talent with our students.
Thank you. For pointing that out. Any other members of the board wish to speak? Everyone's quiet tonight. Okay, board members. Please be mindful of our calendar for the upcoming month. Regarding our committees, I have spoken with Mr. Kovec, and in light of then, all of the new information that has come through and our need to put together our, our new budget packet. He has asked if, instead of meeting the first week of the month in June, that we're able to do it the second week. So I know our, our meetings are normally scheduled for the third and the fourth. The question would be if we can move it one week later and hold our meetings at the same time, but this will just, will do two things. It will give them a little bit more time to get the information we need, and also, since we've, we've experienced this before, information seems to be changing daily from, from the state. By pushing that meeting a little bit later, that will help us to make sure we have all updated information so that we can work to put together our package for our, what we hope will be our meeting on June 20th. Does anyone have any objections to, to moving, moving committee meetings one week later? Yeah, it's the 10th and, it would be the 10th and 11th instead. Very good. Okay, great. Thank you. Please also reference your New Jersey School Board's calendar for upcoming events. At this time, I have no other announcements. Is there any, any information for the good of the order? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you. Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned. You're welcome.